At this point, Stephen is scheduled to speak during the workshop component and Deanna is scheduled with the action item. So I'm going to dispense with the public forum unless there's any comments that anybody wants to make. I would say, I would tell you all, just in case you don't know, is Mark Johnson, who was former police chief here and sheriff of Fannett County, was injured in an accident last night on 121. He's in intensive care. His wife was treated and allowed to go home. So just keep them in prayer and continue to keep John Bantner, banker, in your prayers. He continues to, they continue to work with him to get him strong enough to have the surgery that he needs to have. So with that, we will begin with the call to order again. It is six o'clock and we do have tonight a forum. We have four council persons here tonight, therefore we can carry on our business. We have Mr. Hall, Ms. Lane, Ms. Massey, and Mr. Peavy are here and therefore we can take, we have a quarrel for a special meeting. Item four on the agenda is items to consider and take action on, and the first item is A, discuss and consider the adoption of a resolution directing the publication of notice of intention to issue up to six hundred and eighty, six million eight hundred and seventy thousand combination tax and surplus revenue certificates of obligation to the Texas Water Development Board to provide funds for sewer system improvement projects and resolving other matters related to the subject. And with that, you have material in your packet and Ms. Carson is here tonight and provided some additional information.
Yes, I've tonight, I could do this for posting. Lately, we had to post a notice in the newspaper that all didn't raise the debt for certain amount not to exceed. And that's, you know, just one of the citizens that we run for two consecutive weeks starting next Tuesday. And then we have forty-five days and then we'll have a meeting to authorize the bonds. So this, this doesn't obligate me at all. This is just, this is just to get the timing started and get that raise period going. And I put some payment schedules in front of y'all. I'll give you, you'll have two million dollars, ten million, that's principal forgiveness, and then there's another five million, oh eighty-six, at a low interest. Right now, it's two, two points, two point seven. That'll be determined by Water Health Report closer to the, to the market rate. And then you have another one million, seven hundred and eighty-five, that's at zero percent interest. And so that is saving y'all so much money. In fact, I've, I've, I put together a schedule of just five million at the market rate today at five point four in thirty years, and what you're paying us would be like three hundred forty-six thousand dollars. So it's quite a big difference between those two hundred forty-eight thousand. To the long form, and then the two percent interest is fifty-eight thousand.
Do you have questions, comments, discussion?
This is, our ability to make this payment is from us increasing the rates. It's not from anything else.
Agreed.
Okay.
At this point, we, what we have to do is we have to publicize and we have to have the resolution to do that tonight in order to move forward.
Yeah, just right for the news. Well, as I've been, I noticed that Hannah, it's not that far away, and it had a population of seventeen thousand people. It's, it's coming this way. It is beautiful here. There's so many people living in Texas.
We just need to make a motion.
Motion to publicize.
Yes.
I'm making a motion to get it publicized.
We have a motion to adopt the resolution directing the publication of notice of intention to issue of six million eight hundred and seventy thousand combination tax surplus revenue certificates of obligation to the Texas Water Development Board. Mr. Peavy had made the motion. Do we have a second? Have a second for Ms. Lane? All in favor? We have Mr. Peavy, Mr. Hall, Ms. Lane, and Ms. Massey all voting for the motion. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're glad, we thank you for being here.
Almost three hundred cities that applied the money and we only have a few, maybe ten, about a million dollars.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Here's our quest.
Thank you.
We, we, some of us went today out to the public school. We were invited for lunch, the Thanksgiving lunch, and I asked, I was asked, we were asked if we wanted another, we wanted some more tea, and I said to the superintendent, yes, I'd like some more tea. And he said, we realize that that water is awfully costly for us, for this school. And I said, maybe I won't have any water. Maybe I won't have any more tea. But I, but I believe that they understand. I think folks are beginning to understand why we have to do this. And so thank you so much for being here and I hope you have a safe trip.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a great evening.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move to item B, and while we have it on the workshop, you can do the discussion of the bids and the proposal that the chief has brought to us. So the bid for the police firing range, you have those bids in your packet, and then I believe the chief provided another piece of information to look at. So we're open for discussion on. And Chief, you want to say any things?
Yeah, that's all we've come in. There were three, there was some stood out, basically, some of the other bids that they presented. I said, they had some, boy, about twenty-five, twelve thousand dollars. We had about three multiples that hit, it's three multiples. It is one, get value, it's covered, what was called all that. There were all sorts. I think they all, I'm surprised it worked. I think there was confusion last night, what was going on?
Yeah.
What was going on, taking place? I got that.
Now, now this is down beyond the brush mark. It's more, more of a brush mark.
I get more than that, I got the flash on the map. Look at, kind of, I got there, show you where it is. You can see all the trees there.
This guy that voted forty-five hundred, he doesn't mention anything about the dirt work, about shooting lanes.
Uh-uh.
And I did research back then, I think it was awesome. Much shared, everything.
So on the, the North Texas Land Enforcement one, for the grading flat of tier and shooting levels, so it's going to make it like different levels for you guys?
The issue is, you had to look back, everything's going down.
Right, towards the creek.
And to round that out, you know, a lot of that.
Okay.
But there's a couple of platforms, level out, and there's another, the level of that is actually two. It's one for the hand, and one for the right, so it's a little two.
And it's, it's actually below the lake, parameter of the lake back there. Yeah, you got the, yeah.
And I think too, having the mulching done is going to help with the debris that's been left over down there from, you know, even if we do a foot rock over the top of it, I think it's going to help build it up to say, you know, when you guys trip, you know, you fall on a piece of metal or a broken bottle or something like that.
So are you recommending a particular one, Chief?
And if so, why?
Well, it's amazing, there, why companies, well, we did that, we did that, put in there a, all the way to, you know, like second morning. Including a lot of, you didn't make all the justice or something, I think, out there. Well, they care out there, and that's their, I think, they're more suited and everyone has their interests and they're not there.
And they're the only one that probably gets to know within thirty days.
Um, forty-two Delta, starting, I think, all of them. All of them, starting. I think all of them, I think they're starting there.
On this Jackson Harris one, I like the term pluck and digger.
Shepherd, North Texas Land, and forty-two Delta. Forty-two Delta is Monty Wallace, Monty Tasing, Franklin Brakers, and Shepherd Services. Me, you, and you, Sheriff.
I would like to make a motion that we go with North Texas Land and Construction, just because of all of the insurances that are provided, and I think that would save us if any of him, if him or any of his employees get hurt.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Massey and a second from Mr. Peavy. All in favor? Motion carries humanely. All right, with that, I will officially close the city council meeting and we will move to the workshop. All right, call for order at six thirteen. We ended the other one at six thirteen, I guess, part twelve, and we'll call this one to order at six thirteen. And again, we have Mr. Hall, Ms. Lane, Ms. Massey, and Mr. Peavy present, and since I skipped the invocation beginning, Mr. Hall, would you lead us in the invocation for this session?
Good Father, we thank you for this day. We lift up Mark Johnson to you, Lord, where we pray for healing there and where we pray for his family. Lord, I pray that you would be with the doctors there as well. Where we pray for those in our community, Lord, that are hurting, Lord, that have lost. Where we pray for our country, Lord, we pray for our leaders, Lord, that you would guide and direct them, that you would give them the wisdom and discernment that they need. Where I pray that you would just help us tonight to make wise decisions, and that's best for our community. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
All right, the workshop discussion items, the first one is A, Mr. Stephen Webb inquiring about the city-owned property for building and development, and I believe the one that you're looking at more specifically right now is down on Sixth Street. Is that correct? Yeah, and we have some material. He has provided material and then some additional material tonight. So you want to just talk to the, to the council a little bit about?
I think we have it.
This, this was, I think, if I'm not mistaken, down on Sixth Street, I think that was, belonged to Lena Smith at one time, who was, who lived here, it was Mr. Smith's stepmother. I think that she had a thrift store there, and then I think maybe there was a pool hall or something else in one of those buildings, but she was there for years and years. And that's, the city of Honey Grove owns it.
It was a restaurant?
At some point, it was a restaurant. You want to be accessible there, still has some of the sanitation equipment in there. Three different suits still there. The kitchen is used, you can see in the photos, and just like junk stores of, uh, fallen oil.
Yeah, this is.
Matt Bryant and I took a trip down there, and we would think it would look free, and it's actually in structural sound, this is a people's shop. It, it, it's given the graffiti on the inside, hasn't been occupied for at least one or five years.
Yeah.
Or the plastic, two thousand, really, that's old.
Is there a, is there a hole in the south wall to the next building?
Yes.
I thought so. Joey Rigman took me there. This building has been with the city for a long time.
Uh, for eleven years, at least.
Yeah.
Is when the official came, came.
Yeah, but one of the nice things about this building is the tin ceiling.
All except for the six square feet, it's perfectly intact.
Yeah.
The crown molding, the original tin crown molding is still there, and all perfectly intact. It's absolutely, okay, beautiful, underneath the remedial, whatnot. So with DK Burger's, I learned quite a bit about pre-1900 construction and the nightmare that that was. And when we went ahead and did renovations, I know that the city of Honey Grove uses the building code two thousand fourteen. I went ahead and did renovations to the two thousand forty-one code, just so I'll come back and think later. That's my plans with the building down there. My opinion, just a burger place, kind of makes me headway in culinary world, whereas they gave me nothing but two weeks to be open, because Honey Grove, then forgotten, is unsolvable and isn't worth the time to actually invest five minutes into. And actually, multiple people from Honey Grove for the month of October, multiple people from the industrial foundation and things of that nature. And I know that we found this place August of last year and we just drive up here and it's terrible because of what they were and what they can't use. And I firmly believe that, as you can see over here, and that building would be perfect to open a more culinary expansive location than this burger, being able to offer breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and interchange maybe just a little bit, to where it's not the same thing day in, day out. And with this burger place, I was able to find distributors that don't carry certain items in this area, Paris doesn't, the farm doesn't get them. And my distributor rep lives over in Paris and gets all of the things through his little block, and he's real mind, I mean, we're acting, anything I want. If I want deals, I have, you know, fresh lobster every day, he's found a way. So I can literally carry anything out of that location that hasn't existed in this area before. And I've got multiple chefs that are finishing their non-computer agreements, their non-spoiler agreements with restaurants around the Alice area, and want to upwork their families, have the kids that go off to college or whatnot, and move more toward the Melissa and the Kiddy area. And as the caterer, the bartender told us, he showed out the restaurant, he said that their historic tag is through the roof, he has to charge eighteen dollars for a season's out, and that's for him to be able to cover the cost. And so he doesn't want to go back to a burger burger there. I can't put his name on public record yet because of non-spoiler agreements, but he and another group of people just like him, the ones who'd be a part of this, because they included about two weeks and I'm not. And we've gone with sales records and profit margins and stuff, and he said, there is no freaking way that this would ever survive in Alice. So I was like, I knew that. And before all the building on South Six compared to the main portion of this burger, that area is forgotten. Two buildings just north of it is nothing but a rubble heap. And all the buildings on South Six, that's the way they're going to line up. They're going to all look like a non-consumer, free to live. And so being able to take one of the other restaurants, it's structurally sound, with some, a roof, with some good interior, as you may have mentioned, I think is a perfect opportunity to give it a second life and give South Side of Six a life again.
You know, there was, there was, in the late fifties, a restaurant down there. It was kind of what you're talking about. I don't, I'm not sure if it was along there, but there was a restaurant.
Was it food good?
When I was a kid, yeah, and, yeah.
What kind of timeline do you think it would take to actually get something up and going there?
To be a lot of times, I'd say eighteen to twenty-four months to, you know, ease the burger market of having to rush. Some things got related with this one, which is behind on the timeline, that working with the contractors on this, I didn't realize that finding contractors in Honey Grove was going to be the biggest nightmare I had, because they were coming across.
Nice.
But now, knowing, knowing people and the stack of business partners I've got, and working with Matt on a lot of the finance aspects on this project, he told me, we draw up the plans, I'll line up the people, so he's going to fix it here on that. Once I can get in there, in full scope of what needs to be gutted out, there is no main water line going to it, there's no drain line going to it, no electrical, so getting that full scope, that's why I opened it to the way, because it doesn't take way too long, and then be able to pile it back, then six more months, six more months, six more months.
I mean, I think this was what we want for our community. I mean, we, we want to see growth and we want to see business come in, and he, Mr. Webb has proven that he has invested in Honey Grove and cares about it and can get it done.
I wonder if, if, in order to be fair, we ought to at least put it out there as a bid, like we've done the others. You've done your work mostly, and to see, just to give anybody else an opportunity to submit something. Council still has an option to take whatever option they want to take, doesn't have to, even if the bids are smaller, lower, we have the option to do that. But I'm wondering, to be on the legal side and be sure.
Legally, we have to.
Yeah.
Put it out there, so.
So if it is intended to make it look beautiful and make it work well, have talk to it.
Yeah, and, and that's clearly what we want to see, and that's why we would, we know right now, because of your discussion, we know what you have in mind. We've, and so if somebody else came forward, they would tell us what they have in mind and then the council could say, this is what we like and this is what we'd like to have happen.
And it's been vacant for twenty-five years, and nobody's been knocking on our door.
Yeah, and, and we don't have to do that long. We generally post it for sure.
You should be able to do it in weeks.
You have to do thirty days.
Thirty days.
Post it, and then they have a public hearing with all the bids that they have received, and then they can go into executive session and accept any bid that they want.
That's good. Yeah.
It would be called Slangjang.
That was one that I, I was researching all the history of this town, and I was dumb enough to make it.
Oh.
So do you not know what Slangjang is?
Yes, I do. We all probably know what Slangjang, Jamis. I don't like it.
It is, it's old drunk cow, it's kind of like a ranch, it's so rough.
It's, go to the website, Preservation League website, and it talks about it, all of them.
If you're still in here, forget about that.
It's, it's, it tastes awful.
Oh.
So, so let me, let me just ask you, if the council were to put something out, and where do we have to post it for thirty days? And we've done this with other buildings where we've said to the folks, tell us what it is that you'd like to do, what timelines you have in mind. We've asked, much like Jeff did with Saint, with the Saint Marks, the, the foundation asked them to put up a certain amount of bond money, and if you do what you say you're going to do, you get it done, you keep your bond money, you get it done, and the building becomes yours. That's kind of what they did with Saint Marks. And I think that's what we kind of said with, with the Markham building. And so that might work for you too, if that, if that's what the council decides to do next week. This would be on the next agenda, not next week, but our next agenda. Yeah, if, if you all want it on the agenda.
Yes.
Okay. We appreciate you. And by the way, I enjoyed the hamburger. I did. I'm sorry I left my phone, but I.
I knew, I knew where I, I knew where I'd had, I'd left it.
I don't know how somebody ended up with my wife's phone number, but they called her.
Oh, you had to call.
Oh, you had to call them. That's what you do. That's what you do in Honey Grove, you call them. Okay, that's good. Okay, we've already talked about the police range information, we have that settled. Repairs to City Hall. Where are we with, with that?
So I, I pass it off to Charles over here, so he could deal with all the contractors. He had Jeff Saba come in, Matt Bryant, and two other people were reached out to, but they said they were not interested. Jeff Saba had sent in his bid, which I just emailed to everybody. He has not sent me the atomized list yet. After the posting was on Facebook, we haven't received anything else.
I would like to see the atomized bids from both of them that we've received, just so that we can make an informed decision.
Do you want to put it on the agenda? See, see if we have the bids.
If we have the atomized, we can call on our team.
Yeah, okay. All right, we'll put that to the agenda. The, the next is item D, and I have begun to look at, at that. In fact, went to a, I went to a couple of places in Paris. I went to Paris Monument and spoke with them and visited with them. And then I also went to a place there on North Main that's called Rocket Your Way, and it's a place that basically does overlays with façades, and spoke with him. And he was not sure that what they do, that you could actually put that on the type of stone that we have up here, that it would stay very well. He said his stonemason would know more about that, and he has not called me back. The other with Paris Monument, they, they sent me out to look at the Red River Valley Memorial out at Love Center. He said they could do something like that. If you've gone out there, you know that what they have is that they have black pieces of, looks like slate, where they have put these various signs, seem to like the Revolutionary War, World War One, and it's almost like if you look at a lot of cemeteries now, people put various kinds of things on the markers when they have them done. And they seem to suggest that that would be more what they'd do unless they were actually coming and putting something on, changing something. The other option that occurred to me that we could consider would be talking to somebody like Ms. Massey's father, who does a lot of work at various cemeteries here in the county and around. And one way to do that would be to flip the, the stone and have the smooth side, and then be able to put on that whatever we wanted to put on it, the most appropriate piece of information. Now, what I'm going to say to you, some may sound a little bit strange, but my, my real issue right now and my concern is more about City Hall and getting City Hall where it needs to be, rather than worrying about what's on that stone. The information on the stone is not really correct in terms of when the, when this, when this building was dedicated or when the city was established either. So, but we've lived with it for a long time, so we, I can continue to explore with these various people and look for some other folks who might be able to help us. What they've done there at the memorial out by Love Center is it looks like they created these scenes and Paris Monument did the Revolutionary War One out there, and then they have attached those to some sort of foundation.
Was this monument donated to the city?
Is it? Yes, it was donated to the city by sanitation solution owner at that time.
Okay, so it wasn't a resident that would be offended if we did something else?
And he, he has subsequently died.
Yes.
So, yeah.
It looks like a cemetery.
It does.
Monument.
Yeah. Now, the, the Paris Monument person was suggesting that something could be put on a. Now, the, the Paris Monument person was suggesting that something could be put on a piece of black. Uh, whatever that is, it's marble or whatever it happens to be. And could perhaps be attached over what's there now. And we wouldn't see as much of that gray monument looking stuff. The question is what we would end up putting on there, wanting to put. And uh, I will tell you that uh, there are three people who have done extensive work on Honey Grove and its history and a lot of that is uh, is on the Preservation League. There's probably thirty thousand documents that have been scanned into the system and Melinda Allison was one of the people doing that, my wife was one. Myra Rogers has done extensive work with the history of Honey Grove. And when we get down to doing something with it, it would be helpful, I think, to talk with these folks who do that sort of history. And, and try to be sure that what we want on there, it's on there and what we have is correct. But that's what I have for you at this point.
I kinda feel like you do. I'd like to get to the City Hall repaired before I worry about the monument.
Yeah.
Maybe halfway during the repairs of the City Hall, we can go ahead and finalize the monument. That way, right after this is done, that can be done.
City Hall, this building is the oldest building and it's still in use, government building in Fannin County. So it is, it does have a significant history.
Now, I heard, could be rumor, yes or whatever, that it was a third oldest in the state of Texas.
Yeah, it probably is close to that, I bet. Um, yeah, I would think it is.
Crazy.
Especially it being used.
Yeah, still, still in use, third biggest.
Yeah.
Third oldest, then it's still in use.
Yeah. So. All right, if you wanna, if you wanna put uh, the monument, just put it on the hall, we can do that or we can put it on the next agenda or next workshop if you want to.
I'll say we put it on the hall.
Okay. All right. The next one is E, putting the Armory property on the market for sale. And I, I'm um, I have talked to Carrie the day to ask whether Dawn has indicated any interest to her about pursuing this. And Carrie Pollitt, of course, has not been able to do anything with Dawn as well. And I told her tonight that if the council moved forward with trying to put this out in the same way that we've done these other things and are doing on Sixth Street. Then I would let Dawn know. Uh, I know that he's been involved in Florida, his property down there. And uh, if he's interested in sending something, well then he can do that, he can submit something.
I, I thought at our last meeting, we made a motion to go ahead and get that out.
And do that.
We did.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just need the details on it, like what bond? What amount of bond do y'all require?
What do you all think? What did we put on?
Thirty thousand on.
You put thirty thousand on. Um. Do you think that's reasonable?
I know the person that is, that's talked to me about it, has just wanted to pay cash for the property.
Well, if, if the council moves forward and does that, I will contact Dawn and tell him that we're taking. Bids and recommendations as to how they would use the building. And uh, let him know and if he's interested, well then he can follow up.
I need to know also, it does not include the land, right?
It does not include the land. Uh, it includes about two acres on the west side of the, the Armory. There's, I think, five acres behind that, that the city would keep for potential few, future use.
So two acres.
Yeah, I think there's two acres between the building and the house, the next house over.
The east or the west? West.
West. Oh.
West, yeah. And it includes the two buildings in the back.
Do we have access to that?
Uh, we can get access to that. Terry Paul has keys and we could get those if you need them, yeah.
Yeah, I need to get some pictures.
Yeah, he has keys.
Okay. And y'all said thirty thousand? I don't know that that's enough for that, I mean, two acres in Honey Grove is a hot commodity.
Yeah, well, whatever you all decide to put on it. You know, you're getting two buildings, uh, two buildings are pretty, one of them is really pretty nice. The clothes closet uh, has been in, the one on the east side. Now, the church has a lot of the wash Dell things stored on the west side, so.
Is there any way of keeping those buildings?
Uh.
Is there any way of keeping one buildings?
I don't know.
We're talking about the dog kennels?
Yeah.
They're a good place for it.
Anyways, a positive, they're gonna want a dog kennel behind them.
Well, you know, we talked about those buildings one time too.
What's the address?
Kirkpatrick.
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 The corner of Kirkpatrick and Brown Road.
Yeah. Right, that's up to the Brown, this uh, property.
Do you think uh, getting rid of the buildings in the back, really it's gonna take the value down?
The value, the value in the buildings.
Actual big building.
Yeah, the values in the.
I'd hate to lose, you know what I mean? That's really not really worth it.
The values in the back.
The back building, yeah.
That's the value.
Not yet. Okay. Um, it's fine, oh wait, there we go. We own a lot of land.
Yeah.
Here it is, okay.
So.
Oh. It's appraised at almost six hundred thousand.
It's appraised at what?
Almost six hundred thousand.
The Armory?
Yes, sir.
And the property?
And the property.
Yeah.
The property is what they found the value.
There's a.
And I think this is important for us to see because. Our properties have value in drawing people in. I mean, and us holding on to the properties, they just, we see what happens.
But they're going to have to spend a lot of money on that building to make it uh, useful. But, but I agree, probably, we ought to have reasonable bond if we're gonna consider it.
The land is valued at eighty-four thousand.
Yeah.
That they're putting more into the improvement than they are the land.
And so they would be getting about two acres of that land over there. And then actually, that was just a discussion. It, we've had a discussion about this property out there a long time and the sense was that the city could at some point need five acres.
Right.
And, and it would be cheaper for us to keep what we have than for us to go back and pay six hundred thousand for five acres.
Well, so. It says totally exempt property, four point nine three acres. So that's got to be the five, the five acres to the north.
Yeah.
So are we paying taxes on the, the building?
No.
Okay. And is the building, it's not in disrepair?
It's in pretty bad shape.
What, the Armory? Uh, so when we were having use out there, when it rained, we turned that into a big slip and slide.
Yes. And if.
What, what it needs is, is that you need, you need a metal structure inside that's gonna, and a, and a complete roof.
Yeah.
Yeah. It needs a complete.
Dawn's thought was that he would probably encompass the building.
Yep.
With a metal.
Like they did it way back.
Big.
Kinda like a barn over.
Yep.
Yeah, they thought the walls were substantial and, but.
Oh yeah, the structure and the concrete inside is not going anywhere.
Yeah.
But the roof is so. I think you could look at that and you could look at it, I mean, if somebody wants to bond.
They have to be able to, to put up at least seventy-five to a hundred thousand bond. Or if they wanted to buy, they could just buy, they could just buy anything, yeah.
I just think we wanna start seeing things done with the property instead of just sitting there.
The, the key of course is to, to get it back on the tax road so somebody can, we can collect taxes. But whatever you all think, we can set the bond and whatever.
Hundred, seventy-five or hundred? Seventy-five, okay, seventy-five thousand. Bond and within how many months? Of completion?
I think that, leave that open to kind of what.
Yeah.
What kind of.
And it.
What kind of.
What's kinda gonna happen?
At some point, we may, and since we're keeping a section of the property, we may have to have it surveyed and get that two acres out of there.
I would just try to cast a broad net instead of.
Yeah.
How much of a bond would you be talking about?
Oh, about a hundred thousand.
No.
All right, one fifty.
No. No, when we, we did the Markham building, it was thirty. Uh, we generally have not made it unreasonable and those buildings are kinda in bad shape, really.
It's almost bad shape.
But we, we would ask, I don't know what we decided, was it thirty thousand or something, is that what they said?
Um, they did not say.
Uh?
They did not say.
They did not say. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm waiting on the ladies.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, I mean.
No, we're, we're actually discussing.
Now, Sixth Street, the bond, I couldn't do, I couldn't do.
Oh no, we were still discussing the Armory.
Yeah.
Then he's wanting to know because this value did nineteen thousand two hundred and sixty dollars.
The way I look at it, it's not worth anything to us, Paul, so. Anything that we can, if we can get something in that building.
Yeah.
And I almost think the exact same way with the Armory. This line has to put a number, like it has to have a number on it. I know it sounds crazy, I think the lower you set that number, the more people you're gonna have to look at, the more ideas you're gonna get. Just because it's a low number doesn't mean we have to accept it. And I think you wanna keep the number low enough where it gives us.
Yeah.
All the options.
How about twenty-five percent of the value? Be five hundred, roughly, forty-five hundred?
But on, on another hand, I don't want to wind up like the, like the, like the high school, you know, like.
I, I don't wanna set the bond too high, nobody's interested in your stuff. We, we got a guy here that knows what he wants to do. He's given.
Oh, you're thinking about. I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying with the Sixth Street, whatever it takes to get something.
Absolutely, that's what I'm saying, let's get that bond.
Yeah. I, I would not, well, I mean, I don't think we set a number. I, I don't want to have to set a high number on it, I want it to be completely worth, I mean. Call it a hundred dollar bond and just let it be, you know, like.
Yeah. But we.
I know you probably have to have something on it.
Yeah, we, we need a, a kind of a reasonable uh, amount. And again, if we may get no more bids, there may not be anything else come in. And there might be something else, but the reality is if we like the bid, the proposal that's being made better than something else, council has the prerogative to do it, so.
And that's bond, as soon as he.
It's Jeff, when Jeff finished Saint Marks, the whatever they asked him to bond, he, he did not, it was his, he kept it. Because he had done what he said he was going to do in restating Saint Marks.
Yeah, I just have a couple of people that, after I leave here, I have to talk to, it was never been real, how much can you lock the time? That's why I thought it was scary, it's about being a part of the family. Sorry, I'm a real.
No, it's a workshop.
Yeah, it's a workshop, we still have to. So.
So it's still down seventy-five on that.
So do you come on the Armory?
Yes.
Okay. Do, uh, do I need to list the Sixth Street property and can I list the Sixth Street property since we're in a workshop? And have it noted?
Technically, when you have a meeting, you can make a motion and it is still legal. Now, you have a special meeting, so you have the four people, now you have the four people, if you make a motion during the workshop, it's still valid.
Although.
You can still make a motion.
Although, uh, it's uh, in the workshop, it's, it's really, we've not publicized it as a, as a.
Right.
Meeting.
So what she's saying is, do we have to, like, should we? Not, we're not gonna say do we have to, should we take it to the next agenda for?
Well, I, I think, uh, I think so, I think you ought to bring it to the next agenda.
And that's not a big issue. We wanted to say we're gonna take it to the next.
Here's the thing.
But we can go ahead and say now what we.
What you're going, what you're going to. You can say if you think it's thirty thousand, it's twenty thousand bond, you can, you can set, you can say this is what we're considering.
We're talking apples and oranges here.
Yeah.
Mr. Bailey's talking about Sixth and over here, we're talking.
I think we're still all talking about Sixth Street, can't we?
Yeah.
Okay, we're talking about Sixth Street now, okay. I'm the only orange. I can be that way sometimes.
So.
But, okay, so here's. In regards to what I have to do, I have to put a number in the system.
Yeah.
I can put anything as low as a dollar.
You can.
So. In, in my humble opinion, it would be to put it out there, say a hundred dollars. With the option of you turn in a bid, what you feel like you want.
Yeah.
Like without putting an actual number on it, I can kinda put the verbiage of the remarks in the multi-listing system. Uh, we are accepting bids. I see it all the time where people put them at a dollar and it's an auction. We know that, that five million dollar home in Paris is not gonna sell for a dollar, but that's what they listed it at.
That's what they.
Well. Yeah, here, here's the thing, if, the difference is if we, if we're asked for bids and we get bids, we don't have to accept any of them.
No.
Right.
And we can accept the lowest if we choose to, we've done that before. So uh, we just need to get something out there, it needs to be out there for thirty days and then we get, see what we get. We may not get anything else.
But I can't do Sixth Street yet, right? We have to vote.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but we can discuss.
Well, it's, it's, you can, we have, still have to vote on Sixth Street. We have to post it because we, we still have to take it to council, but you can.
I can do the arm.
You can write it in such a way that.
Yes.
It's reasonable.
Because you've already voted on the Armory.
Yes, I can do the Armory.
Okay, how about, how about what you think on the Armory and that's, that has to come back too, so.
We should vote in a vote.
How much?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, okay. When we come to council, if you all still agree that seventy-five, you've got time to think about it, if you think that's too high, too low.
So I don't need to list?
Yeah, then we can.
We had already approved.
We approved that in the, in the last meeting.
I needed the details.
There you go. You got you, we're good.
Did that clear up everything or not clear up any?
No.
Huh?
All right, let's move to the, let's move to F, the sign ordinance. You have the information on the sign ordinance? Um, this is a, an ordinance that has to do with Market Street and Piner, where there's a four-way stop at there by the park. It has to do with Market Street and Martin Street, where there's a three-way stop.
These are ordinances that have already been approved and these are stop signs that have already been placed, so.
They've already been.
Um, this is the only sign ordinances that we had, so I gave them to everybody, I sent them to David so he could look at them. And I don't know if he needs to go ahead and accumulate it into one.
But it's not about stop signs, it's about.
The advertising.
Yeah, like internet and all that.
The political stuff.
I was just giving you everything I found. But didn't you send us one that had some weird verbiage about a sign in a yard being a billboard and was that our?
That's like my first came on.
Yeah.
We got something like that.
This, yeah, this gets into historic signs and.
Thing that I think is what Mr. Whitlock was talking about.
So what would you like to see in an ordinance?
Well, we've seen one, like she said, that had something to do with billboards.
Well, we've seen one, like she said, that had something to do with billboards and things posted and it's not any of these. And we, we just wanted to revisit what we had because Mr. Whitlock had brought it to our attention, like, hey, here's the things that I'm concerned with. Take it and do whatever you want to with it. He just wanted to give us.
It's included in there.
Yeah, so.
Is there anything you're looking for?
Well, the, whatever it was that we got previously that talked about a sign in a yard basically being a billboard if it's advertising something. My concern from a realtor standpoint is my for sale signs are advertising my business. So would that be a violation of our current sign ordinance? But also in regards to what Mr. Whitlock said, it was ridiculous to see that foundation man's literally every single house.
Because they're not coming back to take those up.
No.
They're just.
Like, I wanted to go. Yeah, I wanted to go take all those little metal pieces because those are expensive and I can use them.
And, oh, chief council.
Yes, yes, sir.
This is one of the sections covering, covering, of course, uh, training that I tend to promote. And it's very specifically oriented for, uh, the, the young fighters, you know, the little ones, the smite ones. Anyone knows about what we're talking about, we have to find all of our disorders. And if we talk about where can you place that? Uh, like all those, as Whitlock talked about, most cities will not give those up with the old trash because of these disorders. But the orders are like to cover that, what types of signs, uh, billboards with that, that billboard will follow the sign. Do a lot of those, uh, it goes also to cover the light type of signs. Like those are ways for all the signs, I'm right there for you, or like that dark sky, we just don't know. But it's all, and then those signs that can also make sure they're within those dark skies with the light. Uh, you know, you don't, and you don't, right, the big neon sign, keep everybody up at night, it's so bright. But that's kind of, and that's who we're talking about, those are the ones that will give you authority to do it, so. That's, I think, that would be all, that's a great.
Yup.
I don't know when, I guess I, I heard that.
So we can list certain specifications, like saying, okay, this type of sign falls under these rules and like realtor signs fall under these rules and different stuff like that?
So that's something that y'all are going over right now? No, but y'all get?
City, that's, I say that as a section in the.
In your class, yes, yes, that, that's something y'all already discussed. Did y'all get an example by chance?
Of the orders?
Uh-huh.
I mean, they just talk about the words, I mean, even looking at the sign.
You can contact T M L.
Yeah.
T M L will give you a whole list of sign ordinances and you guys can pick and choose which ones you like.
Let's get that, have it for discussion and have something.
I think Dennis, when Dennis came, Dennis was concerned about the foundation signs and those kinds of things. And, uh, cable that's been put out and all of this, that sort of thing. Any other comments on signs right now?
Is there any direction you guys want me to take?
I guess look at some other smaller cities and kind of see what they have for sign ordinance and.
Do you want local cities within, touching Fannin County or do you want statewide?
I would say cities that.
I would go to Plano.
I know.
Usually I go to Plano and McKinney. I usually go to Plano and McKinney because the lawyers have always vetted those and T M L's have always vetted those. So when I pull those out, then you guys can pick and choose what you like in those ordinances.
I mean, maybe Trenton or, I mean, just some smaller.
Because we're not, we don't have reader boards here other than the Honey Grove one. And I think that Plano ones, I know they do specify the size and how close it can be to the road and the color and the size of the plant and all that. I don't think that we need that information.
I'll go to White Right, Trenton and Leonard, but then I'll pull something from McKinney and Plano, so you can go, wait, you can come here.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to G, uh, placing a meter on two eighty-eight property. This is, um, this gets us back to, uh, the issue that we've been struggling with, uh, all this time. Uh, this is a new bill, young man came the other, at our last meeting. And, um, it just, it adds to the number of meters that are already. Four, four G, is that what you're? Is that what you're looking at, Eric?
Yeah, the Club of States.
Yeah, that was, uh, that was the attachment to the deeds.
Okay, it clears the states in the third paragraph. There is a two-inch waterline available on the west side of the property. It is adequate for an additional three homes. Prior to construction, a fourth one, a six-inch waterline will be run to the west side of the road to accommodate all seven homes and allow for five. Each individual lot will make arrangements for their own water meters and pay the necessary city charge.
That was the attachments of the deeds, the restriction that was over there originally.
Hold on, let her eyes catch up.
What is it?
Her eyes have to catch up.
Her eyes have to catch up.
I've been zooming on my phone.
This, uh.
So do we still not have like a, um, I don't know, something like, uh?
A map?
Yeah.
So, this is not the same one that we got. But essentially, it's on there.
But, does this say that Marty will do it?
I'd rather have this stuck in there.
No, wait.
All individual bank property will have to agree to a non-contested.
And Charles has.
Yeah, Charles.
To annex the property.
David did it to him about.
Said it wouldn't hold.
He looked like it said it wouldn't hold up because the city council never made a ordinance for that back then.
And because clearly there's been more than three more, so how can we go into something new expecting something that we never expected from the other cities that are on there? Like this, this issue. Sorry, I'm looking for the, the map.
This, this is not a real easy fix. To, to fix it the way it should be, to do it appropriately, would be to put a larger line in.